Your order, so Jennifer, could you please have a, um, he won't call up all those of us present.
Mr. Christian?
Here.
Mr. Gobindar?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Ms. Unical?
Here.
Okay, we have a forum in person.
Well, but I'm here. I didn't get called.
Just in person, just in person.
Well, thank you. Thank you. I couldn't hear. I couldn't hear.
Okay, so we have two board members, Jamie Xu and Sharon, that are ill and unable to attend the board meeting in person for our electronic board meeting attendance policy. They may participate electronically if the board votes to allow it. And all votes will be a roll call vote for the meeting. So can I have a motion to allow Sharon and Jamie to participate in the board meeting electronically?
I'll move to allow Sharon and Jamie to attend the board meeting electronically.
Thank you, Maura.
I second the motion.
All right, thank you. Can we have a roll call, please? Just those of us.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Gobindar?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Xu? Sorry, Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Okay, so those of us present have approved. So Jamie and Sharon, you may now participate electronically. The next item on our agenda is the, oh, you didn't have anything, I'm making approval of the agenda. It's the consent agenda. So before we go through the consent agenda, is there anything that anyone would like to pull off the consent agenda to consider during the regular business of the meeting? Been seen, none. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Still moved.
Thank you, Abby. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. Can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Gobindar?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Xu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So the motion passed. Included in that motion was the approval of the resolutions for the bank. So the officers of the board, please stay afterwards to sign the documents. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Is there any public, any comments on the?
On Zoom? No, there's nobody joining on Zoom.
Okay, so there's no publics. We'll move on to the next item. The staff report, Kate Hall?
Yeah, so I think you guys all have already mentioned this, but I will be on vacation starting tomorrow and will not be back until May 1st. So Kelly is in charge and ready for anything that might happen, although nothing is going to happen during my absence. So that is very exciting for me. Less exciting is me reminding you about the statement of economic interests. I did send out the information that we got from the attorney about filling that out. If no one said that they had any questions, but if you do have any questions, you can reach out to Kelly or Anna and they can help you navigate that. Those are due by May 1st, so please make sure that you complete them by then. And then I wanted to also do a quick COVID update, which is essentially that we have not made any changes in the last month. Things are still moving along and hopefully they will remain that way for a while, if not for forever. But we won't get our hopes up. So that is really good news. And then I'm happy to answer any other questions from my report that the board has.
No questions? Okay. Next item on the agenda is board member reports. Are there any board members that would like to make a report? Do you mean Sharon, the other of you? It looks like everyone's shaking. All right, so move on. Unfinished business. The first item is the Pelotine Library Visit. Kate had sent out, or I should say the staff had sent out a poll asking for dates. The one date that looked like it may work, but we want to confirm with everyone during the meeting is May 12th at 6:00 PM at the Pelotine Public Library. So is that a date that works for everyone, or is there anyone who would not be available on that date?
I'm so sorry. I have a great niece coming to visit on that day.
Okay.
So I will go visit the library myself.
Well, actually, Barbara, we want to do it where everyone can participate, or otherwise we would postpone. And so that's fine. We'll postpone. No, it's not an issue. We just want to make sure that everyone is able to participate. That's why we sent out the poll. So Kate and I talked about it before the meeting, and with the summer, usually it's very difficult to schedule during the summer because of people's vacation plans. So we'll pick it up again in the early fall.
Which we usually go in the fall. So apparently what we've learned is spring is not a great time to try to arrange one of these visits.
Yeah.
Sorry. So, yeah.
That's fine. The next item is the new business, and Summer is here to talk to us about the Abe Lincoln Book Award presentation. So Summer, I'll let you make your presentation.
All right. Kate asked me to come and speak with everyone to talk about the Isle Readers' Choice Book Awards and speak a little bit about Gender Queer. The Isles Readers' Choice Book Award is actually four different book awards that correspond to different age ranges. There's the Monarch for kindergarten through third grade, Blue Stem for third through fifth grade, the Rebecca Cottle Young Readers' Book Award for fourth through eighth grade, and you'll most likely hear us refer to this one just as the Cottles. And then there's the Lincoln Award for high school audiences. And for this one, you'll most likely hear it's just called the Abe's. But these are annual awards, and it is essentially a year-long program with teachers, school librarians, public library staff, and students spending 12 months on this program or in support of this program. So this includes reading the titles or getting very familiar with them. For youth services staff, that means 80 books that we get very, very comfortable with. It's providing the materials across every available platform and format. It's programming to discuss the titles and highlight them like in book discussions. We've had staff serve on multiple aisle award committees, and we have staff who will go and do book talks on all the nominated titles in all of the classes at all of the schools. So while the current program is running, the next year's program has already started. So each year's award will begin with a title nomination and selection process. So books are nominated for each award from April through September of every year. Participating schools, librarians, teachers, and students all nominate the books. And there are many requirements for the books to be considered for the awards. That's from copyright dates and from print availability to just general appeal. But across all of the awards, it's the overall quality of the work that's of primary importance. So by October, they have all of the submissions, and the nominating committees for each award begins to narrow down all the selections. It's usually between 50 and 100 titles, depending on what the award is. So for the Monarchs, the Blue Stem, and the Cottles, the nominating committees are composed of teachers, school librarians, and public librarians. For the Lincoln Awards, they also have a committee of high school students. After they've narrowed down all those titles, the reading committee takes over, and what they're tasked with is literally reading all of the books. The reading committees have the same makeup, and this includes for the Abe's who have a teen reading committee. So by February, each award's reading committee will have narrowed down all of those submissions to a master list of 20 titles. And this is made public typically around late March, and in April, it starts all over again. So of those 20 titles on each of those master lists, one will be named the Reader's Choice. Students will have about 10 to 11 months to read all the books before the voting starts. So any school in Illinois can register to participate. They have to offer a minimum of 12 of the 20 titles. And public libraries are encouraged to register, and schools in that area are unable to. Students are eligible to vote if they have read around three to four of the books. It kind of varies by each award. So the voting for each of the awards, students usually have about a month. It's between February and March, depending on the award. And just in general, for participating libraries and schools, and for the students, it's a really big deal. There's a lot of anticipation around the announcement and learning who the Reader's Choice winner is, and basically with that, learning what the next master list is going to be. So just beyond participating with the Reader's Choice Awards, the lists that are generated for each award, they're just essential tools that we use for schools and for public libraries that really help guide children to really quality materials. And this could be just a child walking up to the desk, asking for a book suggestion, to the schools requiring children to read, you know, a certain number of books from each of the lists or from a certain list over the summer. Okay, and that will bring us to the second part of our presentation. So this year's Lincoln Award nominees include the title Gender Queer. This is by Maria Kove, Maya Kove, who uses the spivic pronouns of E, M, and Air. So this book was released in 2019. It is a highly honored memoir in a graphic novel format that retells the author's struggle to understand and accept air identity as non-binary and asexual. The novel is very honest. It's almost painfully honest at times and kind of chronicles experiences of growing up and non-gender conforming and having to navigate a world that is excessively gendered and how traumatic everyday experiences can be. That's starting a new school, going to the doctor, dating. And this is all while trying to understand identity and why E does not feel like a boy or a girl. So I read a review from the Comics Journal about how Gender Queer serves multiple purposes. So it's a book I would put in the hands of any teen or adult who was questioning their gender or did not did not feel that they're a signed gender fit. But it's also a book I would give to anyone who really wanted to understand what being non-binary meant. And I can tell you, previous to this position, I was the teen librarian at the North Republic Library, and there were several teens I knew at the time, and some I didn't learn until much later, who were struggling with gender identity. And I didn't have any resources to give them like this. We had books for teens who, you know, were questioning sexuality. But gender identity, that's kind of newer, especially for resources for teens. And I just think like, how comforting, how important a book like this could have been for these teens. So on this slide, I have included some, but not all, of the awards that Gender Queer has received. These awards are all from professional library associations, and then you'll notice more than half of them are specifically for teen audiences. So according to ALA, Gender Queer was the most challenged book of 2021. It is also the most banned book of 2021. And I'm sure you are all aware that there's a very coordinated effort across the country to censor books. This is specifically censoring books about race and racism, sexual identity and gender identity. So one of the core tenets for librarianship is intellectual freedom. You know, like it says in our collection policies, "We use all the tools we have available to develop a collection of excellence." That means we are finding materials that are well-reviewed by professional journals, that are accurate, that have value, that meet our diverse educational, informational, cultural, and recreational needs of our community. And I can tell you with absolute certainty that Gender Queer is not going to be a book for everyone. And for some, they are going to find the content objectionable, and it's perhaps something they're not going to want their teens to read. And for those people, we can help them find something else to read. Because there are going to be people in our community who do want access to Gender Queer, and they want materials like that, and they want their teens to be able to read it. As a public library, we have an obligation to our community to meet their needs and the interests with materials that do satisfy our collection policy. That we do support intellectual freedom, and you can make the choice for yourself or for your children on the materials you read, but you don't get to take that choice away from anyone else. So I know that multiple of you have read the book already, and I just think that that's an excellent way that if anyone comes and has questions about it, that you can be prepared to say, "This is what the book is about, and if this is not your book, don't read it. Let's find something else." So I have 10 minutes.
Thank you, Summer.
Oh, you're welcome.
It's not an easy topic to present. I do have just a simple question, which is, have you received any feedback, negative or positive, from our patrons on the book being part of the question?
Not directly, not. No one has said anything to me specifically of, "Why do you have this book? Why is, you know, this is a great book," or anything else. It did have a patron last Saturday where I had the book, and they were very excited that I was reading it. They were like, "This book is banned," you know, and they were very happy we had it at the library. And very, kind of very knowledgeable what's going on. But, you know, we have received comments. We have received, what was it, an email, I think, of someone asking about the book, but that's as far as it went.
So was it banned in libraries, schools?
Mostly school libraries.
School libraries, like statewide, or is it like by libraries, it's just sort of pockets?
By school board.
Yeah.
Typically. Typically, a lot in Texas.
Like in this area, is it banned for?
I don't know if there's any banning or any that have gone through the whole process of actually removing it, but there have been a number of places where it has been, you know, a heated discussion. Yeah.
Where they're put on a shelf, and you have to ask for it.
Yeah.
Behind the scenes. It's not on a shelf.
You can't take it yourself.
But you have to ask for it.
Which is just another form of censorship.
Very, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby.
Any other questions for Summer?
I just have a comment. I read the book, and I thought that even though it have relevance to me personally, I learned from it.
That's exactly it.
And I have a greater appreciation for the topic and for what the world, those individuals is like. So it's not just limited to people who are experiencing it, but I think it's important for us all to be aware.
Absolutely. That's exactly it. Like you just learn so much, and there just is a dearth of this kind of information for people who want to know about it and to experience it in such a first-person sort of empathetic way. We are learning what this, this author is going through, and you feel it.
I thank you for your report.
Oh, thank you. Oh, yes.
Jamie or Sharon, do either of you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just have a comment. Actually, I think last year, someone from the community did reach out to me and eventually to Kate about the book. She was very upset, wanted to be pulled from the shelf. And I just want to kind of mention that we talked about it. I think Kate wrote back to her and eventually pointed her to the form where you can ask to reconsider a book from the collection. She never eventually followed through, but Kate and I did talk about what if, what's the process going to be if that were to happen. So, right, so we, I just want to share that I think the library is prepared just in case someone is a little bit more, you know, passionate about not wanting it on the shelf.
Yeah, and so just to do a quick recap of what that process is, people have to fill out our material reconsideration request form, which does ask them things like, have they read it? What specifically do they object to? You know, why do they want it removed? And then that gets turned in. I then appoint a committee of staff members that then look at it. They look at, you know, is it reviewed? Does it meet our collection development guidelines that Summer was talking about? You know, is it in the right area? You know, sometimes there are things, it's like, oh, well, you know, this one actually was reviewed as an adult book, but we have it in, you know, the children's section, so we maybe should consider moving it. Generally, though, it is, generally, that isn't the case. And then that committee makes a determination based on whether it meets the collection development guidelines and policy. And then if they are not happy with that, they can go to me. If they are not happy with that, they can also then, after that, come to the board if they don't like the decisions that are made. Luckily, we have not gone, we have not, Anna and I looked, we couldn't find any evidence for at least the last, I mean, there might be some before, but no paperwork, anything for the last 15 years on any book challenges. So. But we are ready. If it does happen, as Jamie so thoughtfully pointed out. Thanks, Jamie.
Sharon, did you have any questions? Sharon, I don't know if you can hear me. Do you have any questions, Sharon?
No, no questions. I, yeah, no. It keep, my screen keeps moving from here to here. Great presentation, though. Terrific. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Summer. We appreciate your taking the time to present to us.
Thank you. Of course. Sure.
Right, well, the next item on the agenda is the transfer of funds to debt service and CIF. So Anna, would you like to take a moment to present?
Sure. So every year in April, we ask to transfer funds from the operating fund to CIF and debt service. The transfer to debt service is for property taxes that weren't received, so that we can keep that at zero, so that revenues and expenses equal. That one's pretty easy. Capital service fund, we try to transfer excess funds from operating to put into that account, so that we don't have to take out debt. So we've been transferring money into that. In addition to, like you guys in the budget have budgeted for like a $425,000 transfer, but we'll put excess funds in there as well. All of that keeping in mind that we will keep it between four to 12 months in the operating fund and so that we always have a little bit of access there, so that in case property tax receipts don't come in as scheduled, like this year, you were supposed to get our property tax bills in July, and they won't be coming out till the fall. They won't have time to get them. So we always have some excess funds to help us just pay, you know, pay the bills that are coming up. So, and we don't have a dollar amount because the year's not closed, and I don't know what excess funds will have at the end of the year. So I just asked that in April, can I, can I make that transfer?
Wait, what you mean, after the month of April's complete?
Yeah, after the month, and I booked all of my, I booked all my accounting and my audit entries, and all of my accruals have been taken care of. Like I go through my whole year-end process. We won't even have numbers for the May meeting. Like I'll have to go through all of my audit entries before I can decide what that number should be.
Okay, so we'll approve it now, but the actual amount will be determined sometime June, probably?
Yeah, May, June.
Then you'll transfer sometime in that period?
Yes.
Okay. And so the request here is to approve the transfer of budgeted and surplus funds from the operating fund to the capital improvement fund while keeping the fund balance in accordance with the policy during the fiscal year close process.
So the budgeted funds, is that like 425,000? So if you look at the financial statements, there is a line that says that for the budget, for budget, we said we were going to transfer 425,000 from operating to CIF. And that's going to happen regardless of how the year comes out. But if you look right now, we have $1.7 million of excess funds in the operating fund. We'll probably have $500,000 to $600,000 of expense, so we might have a million dollars that we can transfer to CIF, and that will transfer, and then it will eliminate any debt issuances in the future.
So is there anything else you want to point out to us, or do you want to?
No.
It's that, it's that access, though, that gets determined by the policy, right?
No, we've all, we always say that we should have four to 12 months in fund the balance.
Okay.
And that's on the balance sheet. And so then we'll just take the excess and transfer it, and I'll make sure that we have.
The policy says how much we retain.
In the fund balance. Yeah.
So inadvertently, it determines the amount to transfer. Okay.
So like, in this case, if I were looking at this right now, and I was going to give you guys a number, I would say we would be transferring like 1,400,000, 425,000 of what's budgeted, and then a million. I'm assuming there's going to be a million on this bottom line at the end of next month. Or next, you know, next, when I book all my audit entries.
Anybody else have questions for Anna? Jamie or Sharon, do you have a question in the interview? I'm going to ask for two motions, so. The first is, is there a motion to approve the transfer of budgeted and surplus funds from the operating fund to the capital improvement fund while keeping the fund balance in accordance with the policy during the fiscal year close process?
Still moved.
Thank you, Abby. Is there a second?
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Too late.
Jennifer, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Gobindar?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Xu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. The second motion, if someone would be kind enough to make it, would be to approve the transfer of the debt service fund net loss from the operating fund to debt service to cover the uncollected property taxes.
Someone?
Thank you, Maura. Is there a second?
I'll second it. I get it?
Nope. Sorry. I'm sharing. You missed again.
Ms. Bernstein? Ms. Braxton? Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Gobindar?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Xu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
She's not going to approve the motion because she couldn't make it.
Anna, thank you. You got the motion, so let us know in June what the amounts were. All right, the next item on the agenda is executive director annual review, which will need to move into a closed session. So could I have a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the Illinois statute 5 ILCS 120 dash slash 2C1 for the appointment of compensation from performance or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity?
Still moved.
Thank you, Abby. Is there a second?
Don't move.
She said, "So moved." Can she second?
Ms. Bernstein?
Just trying to follow.
Yes.
Ms. Christian?
Gobindar? Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Xu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passes. I'll be live again. Back on you. Okay, we're back from the closed session. There are no motions from the closed session. So I will move to the next agenda item, which is agenda building. For the next meeting, we will have a summary reading program presentation, a FOIA or Freedom of Information Act policy update. We will be asked to approve the lowest responsible bidder for window repairs. Anyone paying attention on this? Right up. Cybersecurity insurance presentation by Jeff Cook, the Cook and Coacher. Cybersecurity insurance presentation by Jeff Cook, the Cook and Coacher Insurance. And then we've also had the board officer nominee committee presentation of a slate of officers for the next fiscal year.
Executive Director Review.
Oh, yes. And it's part two of the executive directory review. Okay, so another closed session. Unless there's anything anyone else wants to address before we adjourn. I will adjourn the media.